Drive. So I have to do that, the initial stuff from a previous year to him so that he can base, then start with budget. He needs to have a skeleton to be able to develop this budget, and I won't have time this week to do that. Because I got all these other meetings. I got a meeting with Ken, I got a meeting with Mr. Mann, I got my own personal meeting. I can't get that done by, for him to have that by Thursday.
I have that schedule in front of me. It's on my desk at home.
I will.
What the other meetings are. So let's move it back a week.
So Wednesday, Wednesday the thirteenth, Wednesday the twenty-sixth, about so. Then we have the ninth of November, the twenty-third of November, and then the seventh of December. I don't remember if that's seven.
But you two, okay, well, how about the following week? Wednesday and Thursday of the following weeks, maybe the twentieth and the twenty-first for the fire budget. I give you time to get information to the chief. I'm good to you, as far as I know, I'm good to you, one of those e- twenths or the twenty-fourth. What about you trustees?
Twentieth looks suitable for me.
Okay, Wednesday the twentieth. What about you trustees?
All right.
Okay, so, what about you Tracy? Okay, so let's move it to Wednesday, the twentieth is six.
Okay. Annual rule business. Okay, new business. It says fiscal officer payroll issues. Is this where you need approval on your extra expense to do a separate payroll cycle?
Yeah.
Just these, all in favor of the extra expense to pay our fire employees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Names. Approved. But I don't understand why we needed to book that because you already have.
Correct. Well, you need to, you need to vote the, um, the, the parent, to say you guys need to vote the pay that I keep that, because it's extra money to come out of the budget that you guys didn't approve. So you need to vote to pay the extra pay for pay runs.
But there'll be payrolls that didn't happen, so.
But they did happen. Everybody still got paid. Those people didn't get paid.
Okay.
And it's additional money because they get paid out of cycle.
Pay, pay was fee.
So we're gonna have twenty-seven pays instead of twenty-six now?
No, it's just we have an extra pay run, meaning we have to run the pay and a fee that Paycorch charges us. It doesn't change our payroll cycle, because it's just the extra, because we have to run it to pay their charges.
But can we also decide in the work session that that is not gonna happen until she has the information for all seven of them? We're not gonna do three now and two later and then two later later.
I don't know. Is that, is that what you were saying? I mean, if, if we get, if I do what I have now, the people who.
You got all the team.
There's still two people that have not come, but they did work and they have not called. And they'll have to, if I, if I, if you want me to do it tomorrow, they won't give them food because they haven't called me yet, and I don't have a point of contact.
Well, we'll see if I can.
Give me those two.
I, I can, I'm sorry.
Give me those two names.
You want them now, or you want me to give them to you?
Oh, let's do it after.
So, uh, we're hoping you get those two. We need to make a decision. Do we go pay all seven or five of them? Do we do it twice?
We should do it all seven.
Okay, all seven, so.
Was that what we were meeting on, not yesterday? We were meeting when I had time? Like, I can do it Thursday after I meet with, um, Chief.
Um. Whatever's best.
I mean, I'll meet with Chief on Thursday about the grant writing, and then I can meet with you on, on payroll.
All right. Follow me before you meet and go over it and stuff.
Okay.
And then we also were talking about the work session, just to reiterate the need and the desire to use a policy of procedures we already have in effect when we hire new people. There is a packet out there, go down. I know, you know, when a person gets a new job, you're excited, man, I got work, I got money coming in, and they just go through the paperwork, they'll sign everything, but we, as the employer, need, we know that paperwork. They don't know what all we're supposed to sign, there is all the documents. You gotta sit down with them, paper by paper, sign this here, how many deductions do you have? How many dependents do you have? Here, give us a social security number, here, monitor the po- get our back deposit information, all that stuff. But we need to make sure that we follow our procedures and policies on that with all the new hires and our department heads, and once we do that, that's not what's happening. So we need to make sure, kind of reiterate with our department heads, when you hire, we do that.
My, my suggestion is that when they hire, when they bring, they bring the items to, you know, the people that hired, that the photo's in red, just so you guys can look at that sheet on the front, and see that all that information is in that photo.
So we, okay, so what we're saying then, maybe as a resident of the board, we will not hire, we will not sign the paperwork for a new hire until that packet is with that resolution? That's a good answer.
And then that way, Jim, you'll get to see the packet. You can see them anytime if you just want to.
I, I just, I'm having trouble with thinking that those files were incomplete. I, I.
You know, I, I.
Tough time getting my brain around that.
I was surprised too. And when I got the packet and I went through it, I'm like, I can approve these people because I have no driver, photocopy of driver's license because there's an I nine form that is for immigration status, and you have to have two identification. I don't know, uh, employees from Adam. All I have is a driver's license. I couldn't tell if they were grass passing, who they were. But I have to verify the immigration status by a driver's license and a social security card. And then, when I don't have it, I can't verify that.
Okay, well, we just going forward, that procedure policy needs to be adhered to better.
I mean, I, I, I could've brought a folder to show you that. I didn't think that you would need that. I could've brought one in for you for that. But yes, it's, it's a sheet on the front of there that has a checklist and check mark. And when I received those folders, they were not checked. I went through and those items weren't in there. Especially when I started going through payroll to enter them in, and then, well, I don't have this information. The main thing, what I do need is, when they do get hired, it needs to be in the resolution, definitely needs to have, and I don't know if this is PPA, but it definitely needs to have, the name, the date of hire, and the email address that they can have access to as a new hire, which will mean their personal email address. That way I can send them an invitation out from the payroll system, and then they can go in and enter their data. But it makes no sense if they've already filled out an application to make them go in there and then enter all their data when we already got them.
We have a procedure policy in effect, we just need to use it.
Right.
And I understand Jim's concern, it has more time to leave, and it wasn't done, but evidently it wasn't. But we just need to go going forward, to make sure this doesn't happen again.
And it's not every question.
It makes us look bad.
With the volume of employees that we're processing in and out.
Not big, though.
But we're getting five, five to ten a month where this paperwork, I mean, this discussion in front, in front of the community, uh, if our employees see it, doesn't give them a lot of confidence in this administration.
You are correct. You are correct. But it's gotta be, how do we discuss? Until you wanna have something, another meeting to discuss? I, I just have to bring it to the forefront. So we can stop the conversation right here.
Well, we made the motion, we'll get the, the vote, we'll get the people paid. Laura's gonna work on getting two that aren't in there, in there, get them paid, and then correct our policy going forwards so it does not happen again.
So, once you queue up, what's the ETA on paying our boys Thursday to that meeting this week?
Uh, yeah, as soon as I get this, it doesn't take anything than put that in. It takes some time. But, but, you're right, it'll probably be till Friday, and which I'm saying, I'm not waiting till the next day. I mean, you know, they're gonna get paid. Well, it will be Thursday. It will be Thursday when they get paid. So they'll get paid.
We'll not wait till the paper.
So they'll get, I'll put it in on Friday, but they still not gonna get paid till Tuesday. It's, it'll take two days before they get paid.
Yeah, first gotta.
Two days after I put it in there, it takes two days after.
The base, beats the wait a week. Use that.
And then they'll, then I, and on the next Tuesday, I'll put the, if they worked again, I'll put it on Tuesday, and then they get paid on Thursday.
Well, after you talk with Paycorch, we need to clarify the date, verify the employees. They have bills, they've got responsibilities, and this shouldn't ever happen, so.
It shouldn't ever happen, but they'll fix it and move forward.
Any other new business trustees?
Now, let me, uh, say one of the things here. Uh, and dealing with this CARES Act money. Now, we dealt with that four fifty-nine, and so we came up and they said we wouldn't gonna be able to do that, pay for that construction that was done out of, uh, the CARES Act, that's been part of it. Okay, so now we are in a situation, and we have not secured that money, but so that, and we are talking about, we're gonna go through all of this and gonna have a special review and review it. Now, if CARES Act does not take care of it, or does the money change it, this is not our fault.
Um, are you asking, is this, you, you talked about fifty-nine, are you going back to the tanker?
I have the tanker.
Okay. So mine will come out of, whenever you decide what line, you guys have to decide that. Once you get the financing, there's a line item in here, you have to decide what lineup you wanna use to pay that off. But that's not gonna happen till twenty twenty-two. That's why I told you earlier on the phone when you called me, I don't do anything to, to get the actual delivery of the tanker.
All right. So, what we are trying to do now is create, the way it works, vehicle is gonna be, start building. Okay. So, there's not gonna be the money to change the hands. It's just that we got to agree with the person on the money. And it, and the contract does not call for any down payment. So, my question is, are we wasting that time of waiting two days and calling a special review, so we can go ahead and prepare the situation now? And it's either yes or no. If we can pay it out CARES Act, whenever I can, can I still get that money, can do it.
Well, CARES Act gotta be spent by the same thirty percent. So, that's why.
So, can you apply it before?
No, you gotta, you gotta spend it by end, end of the year.
Well, we can, we can, we can spend it.
Which, I mean, for the tanker, if you wanna use it for the tanker.
You can, you can send the, if you wanna give it a down payment, that's part CARES Act, not coming down.
Right. But that's why I said we need to, but when you go to financing, you need to know that amount before you finance, because why would you send that?
Well, it's coming either out of a fire fund, or it's coming out of CARES Act. You're gonna pay it one way or the other.
Uh, that's why you have to ask legal whether we can just take the money and put it in the fire fund and say, this is a good market for that. I don't know if we can.
The same way as fifty-nine.
It's restricted, it's restricted funds, and CARES Act is a separate line item from all the other lines. It's not, it's not a line item.
I understand that. But I'm saying, either I give him fifty thousand dollars to, to the down payment, out of fire fund, or I give him fifty thousand dollars out of CARES Act.
The fire won't give it back if, if you take it out of fire fund. It will stay in CARES Act, which will then be turned back to the federal government. It's a restricted fund, it cannot leave that fund. It has to be sent to somebody.
But we can, I mean.
But, but mentioned, first, McGuire said we don't have a contract.
I mean, I think, just, if we just take what's transpired, we've got a couple of loose ends to fine tune. And we can get this dialed in and knock it out without any question, without any hesitation. But, okay, this is six hundred thousand dollars in taxpayer dollars, and we're not the shopping arena. So, that's my biggest objection here, but I try to get some of this gathered to be ready for this discussion. But we just don't have all the facts to, in my opinion, to make educated decisions. If you put it to a vote, I'm not touching at this point. But if you guys wanna go through with it, if somebody wants to make a motion to move forward, that's up to you guys.
I guess trustee man, did you get your answer that you asked the question?
All right.
The one question, I, the one question I didn't get answered would be, in the eyes of such them, what constitutes a done deal to get us our spot on the production schedule? And so, I don't know if it's a down payment, or if it's that agreement to purchase.
Purchase agreement.
Purchase agreement. So. And trustees, you wanna approve the tr- purchase agreement at least, but we can't fill in the spot with, uh, doesn't take care, if you give them this, they're expecting a hundred percent payment within thirty days of contract signing. So, now, the leasing company, once they get credit app from us, they said it takes three days to get them in a position to fund the, fund the transaction. So we were at the mercy of getting a credit app filled out. So I think for this amount of money, the, any of them could move quick. So, I think we should do a bit more homework, and again, if we get the answers quick, we'll call the meeting immediately and knock it out. Uh, this might be something to get done tomorrow. I don't know.
All right.
Okay, we've taken care of, uh, the staff paying issue. Uh, Severs, do you have a resolution number to take care of the transfer of funds?
O seven six.
Thank you.
I'd make, I'd make a motion, I'd make a motion to pass to adopt resolution twenty-one dash O seven six, approve the twenty twenty-one transfer of funds totaling eight thousand eight hundred dollars for tax collection fees.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, Miss Evans.
So, did you make the motion? Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee man?
Yeah.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
That one hasn't. That's not, that's the second one, so that's, that's, eh, eh, eh. This is all stuff, you didn't say tax budget?
No, this is, uh, transfer of funds resolution. This was carried over from last year with the sign on this table.
That's why we got it too fast, we're not trying to get that together.
Oops.
This package is, how many packages?
Hell, I had that one's next.
Mine was on, mine was on time. Here we go, seven six. Well, because the other one's not on, uh, what did you put it at the bottom?
Okay, next resolution is a scratch, there was no second. That was the resolution due anywhere minutes. Next up, resolution number twenty-one dash year O seven seven. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approve the promotion of part-time captain Chris White, now he's a full-time fire captain, effective immediately, with the job description, new position being approved by the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees and notification provided to the fiscal officer.
Seven seven.
Correct.
I have to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one dash O seven seven.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we're looking for questions now, Jim?
Okay, four is open for questions.
Yeah, in the, uh, maybe I'm just missing something. In the job descriptions, why are, why are there two job descriptions? One for a full-time and one just a job, so Jefferson Township job description, fire captain, Jefferson Township job description, full-time fire captain position. Why are the two job descriptions attached?
You're going from a part-time to a full-time.
So, the guy in question here is now a part-time fire captain?
Yeah.
So why, you need his, you need his old job description here? You, you'll have it on record, you have it saying it? I'm just trying to clarify.
He's going as a lieutenant, false, could be under ten.
He, is he a lieutenant now?
No, you're talking about captain.
Is that my wife, John, right?
Yeah.
So.
But what he's saying is first, the first two pages or four pages, the full-time captain, the last four pages are, it says fire captain. So which one is his, um?
He's gonna still be running hard, but he's, wanna put him at a spot to, uh, do the mechanic.
This is the position that Chief talked about in the work session. They're related to, uh, this individual is going to take on some of the duties, helped by the maintenance coordinator, basically take care of some of the money we're spending at David Fire Garage and the other vendors.
I understand that. It sounds a little confusing to put his old job description in this when your, when your resolution talks about a full-time fire captain. It just sounds confusing to have, I'd like to remove the last four pages from here. It's not, it's not mentioned in there, there's two job descriptions in the resolution. I think it's a little confusing that the last two, last four pages need to be pulled off there, and, um, to save confusion, confusing down the road, because the, the resolution that was signed up front deals with the first four pages. The pay rate matches, description matches, doesn't say anything about the last four pages. I'd have those four pages removed before we sign this, for clarity.
You know, we've, we've had resolutions with these types of, you presented one in the meeting with several job descriptions, where you handled the assistant chief position. So, I think we can clean this up later, clarify this, but you've got employee with skills, that's a little bit of help out, so. Trustees, I call the question on resolution twenty-one dash year O seven seven. You have a roll call, please.
Um, McLoughlin, man.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee man?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee McLoughlin?
Yes.
Good.
So when I post this resolution, am I posting both the, um, job description?
Yep, it's, it was just passed.
Okay, resolution number twenty-one dash zero seven eight. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees approve the Jefferson Township Fire Chief to update the leadership slash chain of command officer structure, and to promote current employees to any open officer position, or leave any position vacant at any time based on the needs of the fire department. Move to adopt twenty-one dash year O seven eight.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Severs.
Give me a minute, I'm gonna, I gotta do it. This was the one for Chief to update the leadership chain of command?
Correct.
Okay, trustee man?
Yeah.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee McLoughlin?
Yes.
All right, twenty-one dash seven eight passes. Okay, resolution number twenty-one dash year O seven nine. Jefferson Township Board of Trustees authorize the township administrator and the Jefferson Township Fire Chief to post for hiring. to post for hiring a part-time fire department administrative assistant at a starting rate between thirteen to nineteen dollars per hour, limited to fifteen hundred hours per year. I move to adopt Resolution twenty-one dash year seven nine.
I'll second the motion.
The floor is open for discussion. Roll call, Miss Edwards.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Mann?
Yeah.
Trustee McLoughlin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Item M I T was discussed in the work session, but it's not on the agenda.
It actually is at the top in this.
Oh, okay, yeah, move down. All right, walk us through this, Tracy.
Okay, so this is the, um, tax budget we get every year. The county gives this based on our rate from the previous year.
This is part of, uses this to start that question.
All right, and so. So, um, they give us the, uh, I, the two three, two and three. The budgets that we get, um, based on the levies that were passed. The amount that we're getting, that they're estimating we get. Of course, we want, it's just, um, you know, they determine that, um, to get. But this is what they're estimating we get, so this is why this is the estimated tax budget. Come, um, come February, once you guys assess this, come February, they'll put out the, the actual numbers. And then that's what I'll put into the budget and U A N. Basically, that's what this is. I mean, the actuals aren't here yet. But this is just a formality, we have to do, and Derby County does it different than other places. And this is the way they, they do it in, uh, Derby County does it in November, June, October, November time, but other, other places do it earlier on in the year.